College District Number 511, it's November 4th, 2025. Nope, he's not here yet. So, roll call.
Nelson Simpson.
Yes, here.
Trojan.
Here.
Goldsmith here. Kudia. Blake. Salto.
Here.
Gorski.
Here. Trustee Kudia contacted me this afternoon and advised me that she will not be here this evening. I have not received any such communications from trustee Nelson, so when he comes in, just note the time to be arrived. I don't expect any board member attendance by means of other than physical presence. Communications and petitions, public comment.
No communications or petitions, no public comment.
All right, recognition of visitors.
Recognition of visitors.
Nobody loves us today. Review of minutes committed to the whole October 14th, 2025. If you have any questions, forward them on. And general presentation.
No general presentations.
Okay, all right. Teaching and learning, communications discussion, board liaison, trustee Goldsmith. Hand it off to you.
Dr. Byer, are you?
You got it. Thank you.
Let's go.
He's already queued up.
Yeah.
I'll pretend to be ready to go. I'll invite Darren Monroe to join me if he's needed. He can just come near the front or he can certainly join us onstage. Tonight, we're actually going to discuss effectively three topics all in one. First, I want to give a quick review of the last fiscal year's athletic program, primarily the scholarship levels and their successes and the dollars spent and dedicated to the fiscal year 25 scholarships for the athletic program at their Division II level. And then, as we talk through that process, part of our next steps are the introduction of two board reports. One of those to allow golf, which is currently Division III, to move to Division II and then add scholarships to that program. And then for bowling, to move that group into a scholarship level as well. Yes, sir.
You had a question already? He just got started.
Well, no, because of a word. Is it scholarships awarded by the foundation or is it credit waivers?
They are scholarships awarded by the college, not the foundation. They are budgeted through the fiscal process.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's good. Thank you, Bob.
However, as an addition, there is a board foundation that is helping the athletic department raise foundation dollars that can certainly offset the cost of the college's funded scholarship program as well. But the primary source of the scholarships for the Division II are funded through the college and budgeted through the college.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, if you're ready. If I can do this correctly. There we go. Quick executive, oh, I went too far. All right, executive summary. So, you may recall, for those that were on the board back in 2021 and 2022, the board did approve NJCAA Division III programs at that time to move to NJC Division II, which then allowed us to offer scholarships. That was on July 27th, 2021. We, at that time, set aside $300,000 annually for four years. This is the fourth year of this scholarship approval program. In the NJHC Division II, we included at that time volleyball, men's soccer, women's soccer, men's basketball, women's basketball, baseball, and softball. And in the next several slides, you see the additional information about each of those programs, the dollars spent and the number of students involved in each of those programs. In that same year, we did add golf back, which had taken about a seven or eight-year break of NJC participation at Rock Valley College. And that program came back at the Division III level, as it was the first year it had been back in several years and did not want to jump directly into the Division II ranks. So today, again, we'll bring the conversation forward with the request to look at golf as Division II. And bowling was added around the same time, a couple of years before, 2018. And bowling has operated at the Division I level because there is only one level of bowling across the country at the NJCAA level. And we did not scholarship the program at that time, and we're looking to add them into the fold now going forward, so. Let's see. Oops, he's jumping pretty fast. Go back. All right. Quick summary, FY '23, 126 student athletes signed letters of intent to participate at the Division II level. That year, we had a $287,000 commitment to those athletes. FY '24, that number stayed about the same at 125, but our scholarship levels increased to 314,000. Please note, the college foundation then supported about the $14,388 over the $300,000 that had been approved by the college and budgeted in that process. In FY '25, the most recent completed academic year and fiscal year, 129 student athletes completed at the Division II level and a total of $301,248 were expended. Again, $300,000 approved by the college as part of an annual expense, $1,248 through the foundation and the work of the athletic departments themselves to raise those dollars. Questions? Okay. I'm going to jump ahead a little bit and show you the program totals for FY '25. This is in your packet, so certainly if you have questions in '23 or '24, we can certainly review those. But in idea of not taking too long, FY '25 program totals, you can see each sport at the Division II level is identified here with a number of roster spots in the parenthetic, the number of national letters of intent signed per program, 24 for baseball, for example. That's their maximum. 183 fall credit hours were awarded to those students. And we pay them, quote unquote, the students are paid by a scholarship per credit hour. And each sport can identify based on the total number of credit hours and/or the total amount of dollars per sport that they're allotted to spend those dollars. So one student may get 12 credit hours' worth of scholarship, one may get six, one may get 15. That's varied by the coaches and the athletic director makes the final determinations per sport. So the credit hour totals for fiscal year '25 across all sports was 2,092 credit hours were waived for those students or paid for by the scholarship for a total of the $301,248 that we identified a minute ago. That's broken down by the fall term and the spring term. Credit hours are not awarded for the winter term or the summer terms. Questions?
Kristen.
Yes.
Find out about getting. Out. Okay, do they find out, like, if they're getting money before, like, when you sign?
Well, in advance, yes. Okay. In fact, this past weekend, A.D. Monroe was filling up my inbox on Saturday and Sunday with all the national letters of intent that students were signing for the coming year. So they know in November before the fall semester of the next year.
Okay.
So each student knows well in advance that if they come to Rock Valley College, sign their letter of intent, they will receive, again, six, nine, 12, 15, 18 hours of scholarship dollars as part of their enrollment.
On the scholarship dollars from the college, is there an academic standard they must meet?
Yes.
Get the money?
That would be at least a 2.0. Correct.
2.0?
They have to be, NJCAA requires that it be a 2.0 for their eligibility. We are, we follow the NJCAA 2.0.
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions at this time? Thank you.
Okay.
Continue.
Quick highlight, then, of the program's success in terms of each individual sport, how they fared throughout the academic year and their seasons. So winner percentages were very, very strong this year, averaging a little over a 700 average. So baseball, 42 and 17, softball, 46 and 9, over 800 average. Soccer, just under 700 average for men, women, just over 700 average. Basketball, just under, women, just over, and volleyball, just slightly under 700. We had Division II qualifiers in many areas, regional finals. Basketball, we're reaching for championships for the women. Volleyball made the region for semifinal. Men's and women's bowling, not scholarship programs at this time. The men's, men's, men's bowling finished third nationally, women's bowling finished first nationally and brought home their third straight title, or was it their fourth? Third, third straight title. Men, two out of the last, three out of the last four years, though, have won the national title. Golf had two national qualifiers and women had three qualifiers and top 10 ranked as well. Again, those two programs currently not scholarship programs. I'm going to jump ahead again to our next step. So at this present time, as we're in FY '26, we enter our last year of a $300,000 scholarship level for other student athletes and the athletic department. Back in December of 2024, the board approved $400,000 for four years, FY '27, '08, '09, and '30, for the scholarship program for the athletic department. And with that increase, the sports themselves can individually, that are currently Division II, can add a little bit to their rankings, but then it allows us the opportunity to add bowling and golf and scholarship those programs at a similar rate. Yes, sir.
Hey, we approved 400,000?
You did.
Why are you getting a little bit out from the foundation then?
I'm sorry? I misunderstood.
Why then do you get a little bit over 300 from the foundation?
We, we approved 400,000 for FY '27 and '28 and '29 and '30.
300 up to '27 and then 400.
When we start FY '27, the budget's going from 300,000 to 400,000. And so with that additional funding, we are in a position, we believe, to add women's golf, men's golf, and then men's and women's bowling as part of the scholarship program and stay in that $400,000 budget.
Questions? That's the ask?
That's the ask. And you'll have two board reports, if you can jump to those. One board report will be the detail requesting the approval for men's and women's bowling to be added, which, oh, golf came up first. That's fine. There's a bit summary of the background of the golf program. And in that request is the move from NJCAA Division III to Division II. That's a fairly simple process that A.D. Monroe's already discussed with the NJCAA about that process. There's about a $400 fee that the division would pay, department would pay for that transition from Division III to Division II. And then, of course, we'd be in a position to offer scholarships for each of those men's and women's golf programs. Five each, five men's, five women's.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah, it's a no-brainer. I wanted to make sure.
We agree, but we want to make sure you have all of the information.
Well, the fact that we already approved the $400,000, the other thing moving the other two up to Division II, I mean, that's just a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, the last time Bob told me no-brainer was in a closed session and I didn't take it too well. But this one, I agree with him. This one, I agree with him. So, and just to let the board know that I did ask the president, Spearmint and his team to prioritize in the hierarchy of, in these reports, the asks first. So we get the money, money ask out of the way first, so. I don't see any reason why you're going to get a beef from us on it.
And the second ask, just to make sure.
Two different reports, right?
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
And the second report is the bowling moving directly to a scholarship fund. They're already Division I, because again, there is only one division for bowling in the NJCAA. It's Division I.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Terrific.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope they all go like that today.
I have some changes to the enrollment update report that's in your packet, since this is a busy time for enrolling students for both winter and spring. So as of this week, some changes. We're down 1.4% from last year for winter, so it's improved a bit. But we are already 2% over the budget for that winter term and 95% to the stretch goal. Our spring term is about even right now with last year, 57% to budget and 55% to the stretch goal. If we look at the year overall, including summer one, fall, winter, and spring, we're 4% ahead of where we were at this time last year, 82% to the budget and 78% to the stretch goal. Are there any questions?
Questions?
What's your best guess that your spring will be equal level-wise with fall?
I will never say that spring will be exactly equal to fall, but we'll retain as many students as possible and it'll be close.
You know, what would be interesting at some point down the road, if you could make a chart, like a five-year? Fall, spring, fall, spring, fall, spring. So we can see if that gap is shrinking, staying the same or expanding? Because it's got to do with the retention, right?
Yeah, and we do get some new students in the spring, but a lot of that is persistence from the previous.
It's a very critical measurement. Spring doesn't fall off. If you're able, like last year, you were pretty doggone level, as I recall. That's the goal, right? So it would be nice to see what the trend is.
Right. And that's consistent with some discussions I've had with President Spearmint on enrollment forecasting. But Bob, you got to remember, that's a microphone in front of her, not a crystal ball. Okay?
Thank you.
She knows, though. She's.
Thanks, Heather.
I know she knows.
And with apologies, I'm back. All right, we're going to talk, is this on me, Carly, or is this? All right. So Heather and I are going to tag-team this one, right, Heather? Sure, she's here to support me, she says. All right. Quickly, we've been working with a company called Interact for the last several months, trying to get a little bit deeper dive into our persistence and retention data. Tonight, we're going to spend time on persistence, and in the spring, we plan to come back and spend a little more time on retention with some more data dives into some of that information. The good news is our persistence from fall to spring has been improving slightly each of the last couple of years. We're up to about 78% now from fall to spring. So that's a very strong marker for us. That's probably one of the highest marks we've ever had here at Rock Valley College in terms of persistence, but I don't know the five-year trend, but we're going to find out. Because we are doing very well in persistence, but of course, we certainly do want to do better. But in the long story of this is that we've been trying to get a better sense of what does a typical successful student at Rock Valley College look like, what activities do they participate in that helps improve the likelihood that they are going to persist from fall to spring? So the presentation you've got in your packet highlights some of those areas that we've been taking a look at. And that's what I'm going to go through, a number of the slides, but not all of them, because there's probably way too many to go through individually. But I want to start with a little bit of the information we gathered from our partnership with Interact Consulting to help us look at our own data, because sometimes we get our blinders on and we don't see everything we need to see. So it was beneficial to go through that process of gathering and submitting the data, because I think it will help us in the future, too, to be more accurate in what we're pulling and how we do that information gathering. But anyhow, this is a quick look at the number of applications that have been received over the last several terms. We pulled from fall of 2019, fall of '23, and fall of '24. We obviously skipped fall of '20, fall of '21, and fall of '22. And why did we do that? You'll probably guess, but it's because of the anomalies that the COVID pandemic had upon our enrollment cycles. Things that were normal were no longer normal during that two- or three-year period of time. We were online more than we've ever been before in the past. Our students were swirling in and out with complexities of their own lives with their managing that situation. So we didn't feel it would be a good comparison. So we grabbed that fall semester before the COVID pandemic began and then two fall semesters a couple of years down the road to have a little bit more balance in the data analysis. So that was an intentional approach. In that period of time, over those three fall cycles, we had over 6,500 applications received that were new to Rock Valley College. We do have more numbers of students that you'll see in the next couple of slides, that we had over 8,000 students represented in some of these data points. But those additional students beyond the 6,500 were students that had applied at different periods, well in advance of that semester. Community college students, not like really your more traditional four-year schools, they tend to apply one semester and may not actually show up in the enrollment cycle for a year or longer. They may apply in the spring or summer of 2025, for example. We may not see them on campus for another year and sometimes longer. That is normal community college student behavior in their application process, because in May, when they're applying, something happens over the summer and they're like, I'll get back to that. And then they do come back to us over the long period of time and end up showing up for classes, so. Yes, sir.
So, did you collect but not display or mingle the COVID year data, or you just didn't?
We separated it. We didn't, we didn't even analyze it.
Okay, all right. Because I'd be interested to know if the percentages of enrolled versus the not enroll, if it, if they changed, if they were any different from the off-years in.
We could find that out. We just chose not to look at those patterns because they were so unusual from the outside looking in.
Yeah, and this is just a thought. The first, as soon as you said it, I'm just thinking, was there anything to be learned from those numbers looked at separately that indicated that people? When you talk about enrollment, how much of it is in person, how much of it is digital, how much is mail?
The overwhelming majority of our students apply electronically.
Okay.
Because our online application is free. It's used extensively in our high schools and in our community partner areas. That's the easiest way for us to send that communication out, is here's the link, click on that. It's a 10- or 15-minute process for most individuals to complete that online application. We have paper versions available. We have paper versions available primarily at the admissions office, enrollment office, and the welcome center of the student center.
Okay, but mostly digital?
It's mostly, probably ninety-nine percent.
Okay, so during COVID, the application process wouldn't have really changed, but
Correct.
the interest level in participating in only online courses would have been the major drawback?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the application process probably did not vary at all, but the enrollment cycle certainly didn't, what they chose to take.
Okay, thanks.
So, real quick note here is that you'll see that this is roughly fifty-four, fifty-five percent of our students that applied enrolled during these periods. So our certain girl, certainly our goal is to get more of those students to go from application to enrollment. So fifty-five percent is, again, a fairly traditional community college yield rate from application to enrollment, but we'd like to see that higher. We also noticed in this quick overview of the onboarding process of the applications for students, that we've made some gains in those three fall semesters for our black students. Their ability to then go from application to enrollment has improved slightly, and that's also been a trend we've noticed in our Hispanic population. So that's just a quick note there, we're monitoring that. And I think I skipped, there was an age one, nope, I'm not seeing it. I thought I had an age slide. Well, that's in the persistence section, sorry. You've got lots of other information on the slides in your packet, and if there's something you'd like me to speak to, I will, but I want to jump to, really to the specific parts of the persistence. So overall persistence I referenced is about seventy-eight percent from fall to spring, and that was reflected here in the fall of nineteen to twenty, twenty-three to twenty-four, again, about seventy-eight, seventy-seven percent here, fall of twenty-four to twenty-five, we jumped to eighty-one percent. This current cycle, we have yet to get to that point, we are trending in a good direction from fall to spring of twenty-five to twenty-six. With our Salesforce tool in place now for a couple of years, we're seeing that data live now, and we can see which students are enrolled today and which students are not enrolled today and are trying to be more aggressive and more intentional in reaching out to those students and trying to help them make those decisions to make that enrollment decision. And then by age, oh, go ahead.
I just, questions? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Oh, okay, there's the age demographic I was thinking of. So in persistence from fall to spring in these three terms again, what you'll see here is that primarily our under eighteen students are in the top section, the eighteen to twenty-four year old are more traditional students or in that next section down, and they're persistent and at pretty high rates across the board there. Our twenty-five to thirty-four year olds, we've had historically in nineteen and twenty-three much lower numbers, but that number's been growing and improving. Our thirty-five to forty-four year old, that group has been doing quite well, and it doesn't seem we do very well with the forty-five to fifty-year four-year-old, but we've not studied that a lot, but it's certainly, but looking at this, we need to take another look at that and see what may be happening in the last couple of years with that population of students. And then race and ethnicity.
Why are we laughing?
Memory retention, because I'm in that age range.
A quick note here about persistence across race and ethnicity characteristics. So the highest categories here are the white student and Hispanic student. We've been speaking for many months and not years now about the GAC equity gap among our black African-American students and their ability to be successful from persistence in fall to spring, and then certainly that bore that out in 2019 and then 23. It looks like we've had some success from twenty-four to twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, from twenty-four to twenty-five, and we're hoping that we can continue to grow upon that seventy-three percent from twenty-four to twenty-five and get that even higher in twenty-five, twenty-six.
I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, like with your multiracial and Hispanic demographic, do you ever find that it's a language barrier of why they either won or not sign up or not following through? Is there ever?
Anecdotally, I would say yes, but statistically, I don't know that we've done a dive into the data in that regard. Heather, do you know if we've done anything specific to that population? I can, I can speak to a couple of examples of not necessarily Hispanic or Spanish-speaking, but certainly our international students, that I see them a lot more readily than I see many of our Hispanic, Latino, Latina students. For them, language certainly is a concern, because they're coming here having done a placement test to get here, and they have to place at a certain level as well to be able to allow to get their visa to come and study in the States. And those students express very regularly the complications and the extra time needed in class to convert language, you know, they're reading a document in English, they're hearing the information in English, and they're having to translate that in their head or on paper. And to take a test, it takes them sometimes twice as long, and it's not because they don't know the material or not ready for the exam, they're converting language on the fly, and it takes a lot of time and a lot of energy to do that.
And I'm sure it's frustrating, and I only ask this because of the ordinary, in Velveter Park District that I work closely with, implemented a new system. So now, because Velveter is a high Hispanic population, they implemented a new system where it, this little machine, not a machine, it looks like an iPad comes in and you speak your language, and it does two hundred and, over two hundred and eighty-six languages.
Conversions.
And you speak your language, and to the receptionist, it translates in English, and then she does the same thing, and then it translates to them in their language, and it was so quick, so awesome. It also does the American Sign Language, and it'll bring up a person also inside, it'll visualize whatever they're doing that day, so that way the person can also understand. So I wonder if that's something that would benefit to increase the numbers, sorry, for these, you know, students and adults that come in, because I know for one, sometimes when I go into places, like, it is frustrating to see people that do speak a different language, they get flustered, you know, and it's something like, can we fix that, you know, just throwing it out there a little bit.
No, that's a great idea, thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah.
And I'm aware of the software, I just don't, we've not implemented a tablet type of a system.
And I have like stuff, so if you want to talk about it, I have the links, because I myself am so intrigued by this, how it's, it is really life-changing for the community, so.
Thank you.
President Spearmint was whispering to me that, that means a serious thing, that, you know, that sometimes they have to bring in a translator to assist, and I know in Lee County, we use a service that if people are paying a bill or going to court or something like that, then there's a translation service that we employ to do that, so. And at this time, I'd just like to make a note that at 5:38, I texted trustee Nelson to remind him we had a meeting tonight, so, just like being open and transparent.
Okay.
Couldn't be texting, but I like the numbers, though, I mean, Crystal brings up a good thing.
Oh, absolutely.
The numbers are good for that, you know, for that population, but she may be onto something about the multiracial thing.
Agreed, and again, clearly, we still have good work to do.
Oh, sure. No, thank you.
You're welcome. I want to highlight really quickly a couple of areas that we know that, again, we're trying to get at, what is a typical quote-unquote "successful" student at Rock Valley College look like that does persist from fall to spring? And what kind of things are they doing that would help them do that exact thing, persist from fall to spring? And one of those things is, when our students attend one of our summer workshops, our new student welcome events, they're three or four hours long, and go over a series of resources that are available, meeting other students, meeting staff and faculty, and learning the resources at the college, those students, just by that participation at that event, have about a ten percentage chance higher likelihood that they will persist from fall to spring. So that information is on that slide. Also, if they meet with an academic advisor, they're literally a thirty percent higher chance that they will persist from fall to spring, that they meet with one of our advisors on a consistent basis. At least once, twice or three times certainly improves that even more. So that's reflected here in that slide. If they complete their FAFSA, about a six percent higher chance that they will persist from fall to spring. If they participate in our one-credit-hour freshman seminar course known as ST100 or Student 100, that course also adds about a thirty percent or higher likelihood that they will persist from fall to spring. So those are the kind of stackable behaviors that we want to make sure more students get, those exposures and those experiences with. Visiting the tutoring center, also a nice increase there of eleven percent. Completing math, science, and English in their first semester also increases the likelihood they're gonna persist from fall to spring. Students who delay math, for example, tend to forget math over the course of their time here, and then they don't do well in the math course, they delayed for a year or two or more. Couple of quick takeaways. So in the onboarding conversation, the first couple of slides, we know we can, we need to continue to improve our communication, the Salesforce tools helping us do that, with our black students, our multiracial students, and our Hispanic students to continue that positive trend. We want to get that conversion rate from about fifty-four percent up to sixty percent or higher, so we're continuing to work toward that. We want to continue to monitor those students who are just, are enrolling in and participating in the new student welcome, ST100, meeting with advisors, and continue to find other ways to engage those students. The thing that we're gonna take forward from the conversation with our consultant is, how do we cohort these students together so we can layer these different activities together to get that profile of that quote-unquote "successful" student at Rock Valley College? And then certainly the corollary is, what does an unsuccessful student look like? What are they not doing that we can put those resources, tools, and information in front of them in a more complete way? Questions, comments?
I'm an example of an unsuccessful student, I spend a lot of time at a job, I don't make any money out of it, so that's okay. Bob?
Yes, on chart number eight.
Chart number eight, what? Is there a page number at the bottom?
Number eight.
Oh, slide number eight, okay.
So while the persistence went from seventy-eight to eighty-one, I would wonder what the number of applications were during that trend period, because, for example, in the first period, if you had a thousand that applied, you'd have seven hundred and eighty, but if you look at the third year, if only five hundred, even though the persistence was higher, your number of applications were down.
This is not a direct correlation from the applications to the persistence, these are the enrolled, the enrolled students, so it's not the, it's not the application number that I would want to get back to you on, it would be the number of students that were enrolled in each of those terms. The applications are helpful, but we only get about half the applications to become students.
Yeah.
So I'd want to get you the number of students for each of those terms.
So we'd want to see the number of applications and a trend, a trend now, trend chart, not just a lump.
Okay, we can do that, too. I'd have to, yeah, we'd have to, Heather and I would have to dive into that a little bit.
If the number of applications are growing, that's good, the number of applications are growing, maybe not so good.
If the, if the, if the applications don't grow, but we get more, a higher percentage of them to enroll, that would also impact the number.
So we could look at both numbers.
Yeah, we'd want to look at both.
And a trend.
I think that's what you're asking.
You know me by now.
I'm with you.
Like trends.
You have a question?
I'm just curious, on slide twelve, and maybe, I wasn't here at this time, but what the middle part there, persistence rate ninety-three percent, stop-out rate seven percent, what happened?
We are looking at that question, too.
Okay.
Well, our sense is that that was a lower period of deployment, because that happens to our veterans regularly, those that are enrolled here on a veteran status oftentimes get called away on active duty.
Got it.
So we are needing to dive into that particular question, because we are also like, what the heck happened?
Yeah.
So we are diving into that one.
Thanks.
Trustee Nelson has joined the meeting at 5:50 P.M. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Up to this point.
Thank you all very much.
Bye to you.
Heather, you got all my notes? Okay.
So your, so your next step is just to try to tie it?
Tie it all together.
Try to make sense of it, okay.
Back with the retention analysis.
Okay.
So good afternoon, trustees. So I'm here to present with my colleague, Peter Held, he's my dean of workforce development, he's also co-chair for the artificial intelligence team that we have here at RBC, and I also call him the AI czar, because he's very, very knowledgeable, and I explain why when I go through the presentation, why I have deemed him that, but he and I are going to present. So I'm gonna start off by talking about the four phases of work we use to complete our draft AI policy, and then talk about the five areas of focus that we focused on, all right, when we were doing this work, and then Peter is gonna spend some time, which is the most important part of the presentation, actually talking about the feedback mechanism, and what the faculty and staff members thought about what he had, what we had actually done, and to give us feedback so we could continue along this journey, all right? So, the task force consisted of a blend of faculty members, some middle management, and I'm the vice president on this task force. So we have a nice blend of people from academics and also from the operations side of the college, too, as well, and student services. So I mentioned four phases of work. So we started off, of course, before we got into each area of focus, looking at doing research on what other institutions were doing, what were some of the best practices, what were some of the takeaways and the insights that we could use, you know, for our own artificial intelligence framework? Then phase two, we looked at synthesizing that information. So after doing research from a couple of institutions, looking at what was happening, what they were doing, their key insights, we turned that into a document of drafts and recommendations. And when we completed those drafts and recommendations, on September the second, during professional development day, we used that platform or that vehicle to help us gather and collect feedback from the RBC community on what they thought about some of these things that we put together in this draft. And phase four, which will happen now, is actually looking at, you know, taking a look at that feedback mechanism, so Peter will go through that, we have to come together as a team and filter all that we received, take some things into consideration, and do some revamping and realigning, and then produced a more solid final draft that we could take back again for people for review, all right? So, the areas of focus, and I'm gonna touch on each of these, you know, just briefly, I'll just list them or enumerate them here, is the first one is policy, ethics, and governance, the second one is curriculum and pathways, the third one is teaching and professional development, the fourth one is innovation, lab, and tools, and the fifth one is communications and engagement. You realize that we cover all aspects of the college here, not only the academic side at all. This could also cover operations, you know, student services, what have you, it covers everything. So let me delve into this. So when we were looking at policy, ethics, and governance, the guiding question for us was, what are the boundaries and expectations of how we use AI? So we wanted to make sure that what guided us here is ensuring that we had standards for responsible use. We wanted to make sure that, you know, there was privacy protections to people, and that we had ethical guardrails that we would implement before we actually adopt. So that's what we took a look at for that area of focus. The other one is curriculum and pathways. So this was sort of dichotomic, we were looking at how do we prepare students with the knowledge and skills to thrive in an AI-shaped world, but not only students. So we were looking at curriculum across all divisions, but also taking a look at our industry partners. And why I deem Peter the AI czar is because he has done a lot of AI training for school districts and for industry partners. He has become very versed in doing that. So we have to make sure that whatever credentialing and pathways we have, it's tied to workforce needs, and looking at what those workforce needs are, and making sure, of course, that is equitable access for all learners, and that nobody feels left out, feels left behind. So for teaching and professional development, we were looking at how do we empower faculty and staff to use and integrate AI wisely and effectively in the classroom? There are lots of tools out there, and that's why we say a tiered system, because everybody is at a different stage. Some people are more versed than others, you know, when it comes to AI. And what I, what I thought about in particular is, for teaching and professional development, is how does it help to reduce workload? How does it help with repetitive tasks? If you're a teacher, multiple choice, you know, when you have administrative tasks to do, you know, scheduling and so forth, this could definitely help with that, too, as well. So we want to be able to provide hands-on, practical, professional development opportunities, and make sure that we build confidence through mentorship and support, because as I said before... before, we want to ensure that nobody feels left behind. This is sometimes an intimidating arena, and people could feel very much intimidated. But I tell you, today Peter showed me a tool, how to get one of my work assignments done. So, you know, it was exciting, because again, it reduces my workload when I have help and assistance. So I'm excited about that. So the other one is innovation labs and tools. So what AI tools should we explore, evaluate or pilot, and how do we do it safely? So looking at tools that help in learning and efficiency, I can tell you one off the bat, I will name the others, because I don't want IT to get a heart attack, but virtual reality, VT, for instance, is used in CT, we use it in welding and in other areas of engineering, because we want to bridge the gap between the technical aspect or the theory and the practical. So we use VT to help, too, as well, you know? Once again, we want to make sure we are applying guardrails for privacy and compliance, and we want to make sure to share the results to guide for future adoption. So all the things that you learn, and I could list a whole bunch here, but as I said, I don't want to get into that to give my IT colleagues a heart attack up with that. So communications and engagement. So this one is important. The guiding question we used here is how do we bring together, bring others along for the journey and make sure everyone is seen and everyone is heard? So, you know, one thing we do is communicate clearly and consistently about the initiatives we have. We try to foster transparency and a two-way feedback, and we keep the human touch in all messaging. That was done in Professional Development Day. We had a proposal, a draft, we threw it out to the RVC community, we elicited responses and feedback, and everybody told us what it is they thought and how they felt about things that we were doing. Now, who have we had feedback from? We have had feedback from, as I said, the staff, faculty, admin, faculty chairs. Who we still have to get feedback from is that we have to elicit feedback from our industry partners, our community leaders and our students. I mean, Peter is helping us with the industry partners and community leaders, where he does that outreach and he does those training and development exercises at the school districts. And with industry partners, we are getting requests. Then my executive director for industrial development also gets requests from industry partners for AI training and development, too, as well. So we get to see what the needs are to, through that forum or through that vehicle in particular. Now, for the most important part of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thanks, Dr. Stewart. I think you somewhat oversold me, but happy to be here. Thanks for the chance to speak with you. So as Dr. Stewart mentioned, we had a chance to roll out some of these, what we called micro-drafts, to some of the campus community. And so what we hadn't done is draft a, you know, multi-page document and ask people for feedback, but rather, every part of our team took little snapshots of what we had learned through our research, made recommendations, put them onto slides, and then shared them with the, shared them with staff, faculty and others, so that we could, you know, get an initial feedback before we put lots of work into drafting some of those. And so the feedback we have here is both from a Professional Development Day session that we had, as well as I got a chance to speak to our faculty chairs at their faculty chair retreat this fall. And so just as a summary, kind of a one-sentence summary of the feedback we've received has been roughly that the campus views AI with cautious optimism, and perhaps many of you find yourselves in that boat, too. There's a lot of interest in it, but there are some understandable concerns and nerves with how we do this moving forward. So what we've heard so far, and again, I'm reporting the feedback, not necessarily actions taken based on it, but the feedback we received is that we really kind of pulled three mandates from that. Really, people are looking for clear policy, which is understandable, especially around IT usage and doing it with guidance from the IT department and others. Ongoing training is needed. This is, as this will become clear as I show you some more. And then resource support. If we are going to pursue being more forward, AI-forward as an institution, that's going to take some human resources, some financial resources and some other technological resources. So our people that we spoke to recognized that. So one of the shifts of focus that the, we got a recommendation from, and I shouldn't say a shift, because it weren't, it wasn't that we were necessarily focusing on trying to do one thing, but people wanted to make sure our focus was towards enhancing our efforts, enhancing student effort, productivity, learning, things like that, not necessarily replacing human roles. And of course, that's not really what we're about here, is replacing the roles, but rather to do what we do better, more efficiently, more effectively. So we got that loud and clear from the faculty and staff, and certainly we agree with that as well. So what I did is I compiled some of the data that we received, some of the feedback received, and put together kind of a never list, right? So what are things that we heard back from people, and they said, please don't do this with AI? So one of them would have been obviously around data, data privacy or PII. Do not share, upload or process personal or sensitive information with AI tools. This is part and parcel with our acceptable use of technology documentation we already have as part of the college. And what we're looking to do and what we need to be drafting now is a acceptable use policy regarding AI tools. And so what we have existing will inform that in a heavy way, but then we need to personalize that and customize that for some of these new technologies that are out there. So don't, don't abuse data privacy laws. That was loud and clear, understandable. Academic integrity was important as well. AI should be supporting learning, not replacing it. Students should not be using it to complete their assignments or cheat, right? I think that's the big question mark and the big concern is, well, how do we do this in a way that supports the student learning and doesn't replace it? Also, I think this leans a little bit into faculty and staff use in the area of teaching, right? Are we being sure that we are keeping the humans at the forefront of our teaching efforts and not outsourcing some of that to AI? We've heard that, too. Two other things on this, be careful or red, red warning list, personnel and high-stakes decisions. So AI might be able to inform, but never is the ultimate decider in outcomes hiring, regarding hiring evaluation and student advancement. Also mandatory human workflows. So making sure that humans, there's a phrase in the kind of the AI space called human in the loop, making sure that we don't pull humans out of this. AI is a great tool for the middle. Something starts with a human, something ends with a human. But in the middle, that process of developing can be really enhanced by using some of these AI tools. So keep those humans in the loop. All right, a few challenges and resource needs that surfaced through the feedback we received so far. IT capacity and support. So Executive Director John Wicker has brought this, you know, to, to, to the conversation and to our group. IT staff has a lot to do already. And so if we layer in more technology, they are going to need people to be able to manage it. Now, I don't think that the IT department has to be responsible for implementation, rollout, or even the development of AI processes and tools and enhancements on campus, but they do need to be able to manage the backend of it, not only with safety and security, but also making sure that everything is running as expected. So capacity is important there for IT. Internal data utilization is an interesting one. We are entering a world where the most important and valuable resource is data. And so we have tons of data at the college, student data, demographic data, some of what Dr. Pyer just went through, we have lots of data. And if we can tap that in a safe and secure way, that gives us a good advantage to be able to get good insights into what we're doing and how we can, you know, make the college better for our students. So utilizing that is a challenge, because it's hard to do that safely and well, but also it's a good opportunity. And also student engagement and training. So of course, we talked about students using and misusing AI, so we need to watch out for that, that is a challenge. And the resourcing would be helping faculty to understand and training them. How do you teach responsible and discipline-specific AI use?
Okay.
So that's an important thing for us to do, too, is help our faculty, coach our faculty to coach our students. All right, so, yes, the path forward. So we got a lot of feedback around training and support, which is why we kind of gave it its own spot here. The faculty especially, you know, have said if we are moving in this direction to be more AI-forward as an institution, and I, again, that's a loose phrase, because being AI-forward can mean a lot of different things, and that's what we've been working on for the last half years, to say, what does that really mean for our college? But they're looking for more sustained professional development. To have a session at PD Day is great. To have training for an hour with a department is great, and we've done those things. But they're saying if we want to really dive into this, we have to do this in a much more systematic way. That message was clear. Subject-specific support center, so is there a way to have, you know, kind of a manned lab, whether it's an in-person space or maybe just a virtual space, where faculty, staff and other employees can go and get the help that they need in order to complete the task they want to complete with AI? So are we going to resource that? Also, just tool access and licensing. So once we have an acceptable use policy that's well-thought-out and approved through IT and all those channels, then we have to figure out, how do we, A, get people access to the tools that have been approved, because there's a cost associated with that, and then B, how do we provide sort of a sandbox environment for people who want to try out some new and upcoming tools that might be great within their discipline, but do that in a safe way? So that's kind of some question marks, too, but that's an area where people would love some support there. And accessibility and equity, of course, is at the heart of all that we're doing. We want to make sure that any AI adoption follows our, follows clear ethical guidance, accessibility checks, and things are being reviewed by humans who have experience in this area, so that we're not accidentally bypassing any members of our community. So the last thing to share with you here before an opportunity for questions from you would be to say that, you know, what we're working on right now is really establishing a good foundation and baseline, but we do want to kind of present a little vision for the future. And this is, obviously, nothing's written in stone, but this is an opportunity to kind of dream, where could we go? So this is, I think it's an interesting idea, and President Spearmint has shared some of his interesting ideas, too, that establishing an AI Center for Excellence on campus would be a really intriguing thing, and has followed a path, that would be following a path other schools around the country have set. Kind of that first step is foundational, what we're talking about now, an AI innovation lab on campus, implementing best practices here. So, you know, you work inside the house first, and you build that out, and you get it really smooth, and you get things working well operationally, you're building out efficiencies and curricular improvements. The next step is to build out and look outside our walls metaphorically, and to say, how can we support local community organizations and industry partners? We're doing some of that with customized training and giving them some training. I've had an opportunity to be part of that, but how can we do that in a much, much more systematic way through this Center for Excellence? And then, you know, lastly, I think there's even a vision for maybe us being a hub, to have a source of gravity, pulling everybody in the region towards us for looking for training, whether for their businesses or their other schools, anything else, we could be kind of a training hub. So I think there's, the sky's the limit with this. It's very exciting, and I get very excited about this topic. So just a last note there, that there's a lot of grant money out there for this. So the more that we want to engage with this, I think that we could find the money necessary. That's, that's really about it. I'd love to take any questions?
Yes, I have, I have some comments and questions. I was at the New Orleans ICTA, ACTA, ACCT conference, two days, where they had 142 different sessions, 21 of which were specifically on AI. I attended a couple of them, and I got to tell you, put that last sheet back up. Your presentation was by far the best that I've seen go into ACCT in New Orleans. The other ones typically were sitting around a table, talking about ChatGPT and talking about this, and it's going to be scary and all. But you guys, right there, you've nailed it, because the luncheon speaker we had on day two, who was a consultant to the AI, to, you know, all these people, they said, we should ask, how can we make our college and region the place where employers turn to for AI-ready talent? You've nailed it right there. Congratulations.
Thanks for that feedback.
Well, I just want to comment, I think trustee Trojan and trustee Nelson are used to being in charge of their own businesses and running things the way they want. It may not be the style of sitting down at a roundtable and actually throwing ideas across the table, but on my sales and marketing background, that's what we used to do all the time, and that's how we came up with presentations like this. John?
Well, that's why Bob and I are such a good team. We don't always think along the same lines.
It's for party animals in New Orleans.
Yeah. Well, that's a top secret.
That's sacred. We don't, we don't talk about those things.
Okay. Listen, I, I went to the attorney's meetings twice, and AI was at the forefront of their discussion as well. But one of the things that I, one of the facts that I was presented with was that surveys indicate 90% of college students are using AI now. Another fact was that, and I'm not so sure it wasn't a very large judgment, they accused the student of using AI and cheating. I think they discharged him from the school. And it turned out, of course, that he hadn't, and they were able to prove that and, and received a substantial judgment, I believe seven figures. And I appreciate the efforts that the staff has undergone to this point, but I, I see us as behind the curve. I proposed at the ICCTA, which is the Illinois version of the Community College Trustees Association, over a year ago, that we ought to unite the 48 community colleges and become an AI powerhouse, because then we could export, export our students throughout the nation, not just locally. So I'm glad to see this, but I think it's a little, a little late. And the idea that we're approaching AI with cautious optimism has me concerned, because if it's already here, why are we approaching it with cautious optimism? We ought to be plunging in with both feet. And the other concern I have is that, and I like the analysis of AI as, as a good middle of the project tool, and I like the idea that the faculty wants to get on top of AI, which, again, is, is a little late in the game, but the idea that you're going to segregate out AI from, you know, on some kind of quest for academic integrity is, is somewhat more difficult than I think the presentation leads. So, but my questions are, how, how fast can we get these things accomplished? And I'm particularly concerned and have a question about a comment that I read, which was students were misusing AI. You know, it's a tool, just like calculators were a tool, but it's much more sophisticated. I like the idea of a support center. I'm not too keen on the idea that was repeated in the presentation, that, oh, it's going to cost the college a fortune. We already spent a fortune. And the other thing I have a question about is the statement that AI is stretched thin. And my question is, well, what are our employees actually doing that we're stretched so thin? And I'd like, not now, but I'd like to get a report on that, especially if we're going to be asked to spend the kind of sums, it seems, we need to spend for computer stuff. And it, it makes me nervous, spending that kind of money without really much of cooperation and oversight by the board. And with all due respect, when it comes to community leaders, I think the board are community leaders, and they ought to be consulted and not just talked to. Thank you.
Before you, you asked a lot of questions, and I'm not expecting you to, to answer them all, because you rattle them off. And I understand AI has been actively being worked on since the late 60s, early 70s. It isn't new. It's only popular now because people are making money off of some really shoddy product, okay? And some of people are going out of, not business, but losing billions of dollars on it, you know? Meta, Facebook, they're losing their shirts on it, but they're still investing more money into it, so. And in terms of, it's already, it's been around, people are aware of it, they're responding, they've been doing a study for months now, and trustee Trojan has, you know, brought it up and asked specifically for, for a report, and they've given one that he's very happy with. And I actually, it looks pretty thorough, and it's, I like the way that you're looking prospects for the future, and you're going to come back to us with specific asks. Now, the asks in the future need to be specific, targeted, and... Now, the asks in the future need to be specific, targeted, and impact on the workflow that you've, you've mentioned here, whether it's the students or whomever. And I'd also like to state that you're probably already, they're probably already using AI, the Salesforce tool that you mentioned, there's an AI backend to that. I don't know if there's probably a backend AI dilution, too, and there's probably any other thing that you use in the cloud, the Microsoft Office in the cloud is using as AI, you know? So it's, it's there, and I, it's, we're already using it or, you know, experiencing it. I think probably some of the business products that they've chosen were based on some of the AI tools that were available to them to help streamline the analysis of, of data. But I'm glad that you focused on protecting the, you know, the personal identifiable, identifiable information type of thing. And this is where AI could be a threat, but it's also a limitation because AI can't access a lot of that if it's been protected, and it can't access a lot of data that's behind paywalls or locked down and stuff. So this is where AI's kind of fault comes in. They can't access things that we can. So they can assimilate and lay things out a little bit differently, but I would ask, if you have a list of questions like that, John, can you send them to President Spearmint so he can run them by his staff and have them review them? This, so you're not catching everybody off, I mean, at a meeting here?
Well, well, certainly, but this is, this is cow, I mean, and I just saw the material.
Well, ask them, what two questions would you like answers to right now?
One, are you aware of 90% of the students are already using AI? And two, do you feel we're forward enough in terms of our development of an AI policy?
Yeah, thanks for those questions. And I think one of the other questions that I heard you ask, too, was about the speed of, the speed of uptake, and are we just getting after this now? So to kind of get after that, yes, we are very aware that students are using AI all around the country and around the world. So it's not new. Students certainly have been able to tap into that towards, you know, both healthy and beneficial use in their learning, as well as using it incorrectly, you know, for academic dishonesty and cheating. So yes, definitely happening now. I will also say, too, that this, I don't want to give the impression that this presentation is indicating we haven't done anything related to AI prior to this moment. Actually, I started at the college in early, in March of 2023, which was a couple months after ChatGPT 3.5 rolled out in November of '22, which was the time when really these large language models took off and got, you know, kind of this worldwide, this kind of worldwide awareness. So, and when I started, I, I think I was in the first profession, I think the second professional development session since I was here, I was already leading AI trainings with the staff. And I just bring, and I have done every single PD day since. And I just bring that up to mention, we are doing trainings, we are helping our faculty wrestle with this. We now have had multiple AI sessions every professional development day, everything from how to use it to influence and educate in English, to how do we keep people, help the students, you know, stay more on the honest instead of dishonest track. So that's happening. This, what we're doing, and when we talk about being AI cautiously optimistic, it's really about saying, instead of being reactive and saying, well, how can we tweak a little bit here and how can we protect the assignments there? What we're truly doing is saying, how do we take this and make this a feature of the college, something that we're able to bring students through so that they're ready to be in the workforce of the future, which is going to have AI in just about every position as, as, you know, time moves on?
And I think both John and Bob alluded to that, making sure that we wind up being a resource.
Right.
For, for AI. John has a larger picture, which sounds pretty grand. I mean, getting all the community colleges to work together on it so that we actually, as a state, become an AI leader, resource in education. And Bob, go ahead.
I like the idea, the innovation lab, which almost leads to the question, would you think of offering a course that students could take outside of Rock Valley College? In other words, a regular course, A101 AI or whatever, you know?
Yeah, that's been part of-
Offer it to industry and become a, I mean, that would begin to set you up as an innovation center for the region.
Yes, so part of what we've been working towards is not only looking at how can we embed AI into these existing curriculum, but what curriculum do we need to build and add in order for us to become competitive at this level? So the obvious place to look is when the CIS department, but there may be other opportunities in other departments as well, where we would build out AI-specific training. Our CIS department actually does some AI training right now. It's not called that, and so you may not know it. I forget what the titles are within the, the product or within-
Python and the coding aspect.
Yeah, some of that stuff is already happening, but I would say we are looking at building out more. So yes, I agree with you.
Your, your three things are the prospects of the future. You have set yourself the goal, the goal. That's where you're going, and I think that's the most important thing, rather than sitting around talking about AI and this, that. You're setting a goal as to where we're going to go, and I think that's very good.
Well, it sounds like it was a response to something that was already happening, just like it happens in businesses all, all over. There's something going on. People are doing things, trying things, but you don't have a policy in place for the use of it yet. So you start, you pull together a team, and take a look at all the different uses for it, and then you work on the policy. Does it seem like you're doing it after the fact? Yeah, but everything really is. Nobody, I mean, they, they didn't invent the wheel, you know, in advance of needing it. They, they were trying to solve a problem, and you're looking at solving a problem or addressing it with policy, which is what we're here for. We're policy and fiduciary, so thank you. Any other questions?
I just want to make a quick, well, I don't know if it's going to be quick, but it's probably going to be quick comparatively. Thank you for this. This is really interesting. Maybe because it's so front of mind to me, I have my AI book club on Tuesdays through my university. So I literally was having my book club before I came here, talking about this stuff. And then I was in a faculty learning community last year through my university, talking about much of this stuff. And so it feels like we're actually on par with, you know, I work for an R1 university, and they're just start, not just starting, but they're having the same conversations that we're having. So that feels good. It feels good to know that, that we're having the same conversations that R1 institutions are having, you know, all over the country, and that we're at the same point in those I think that, you know, academia moves really slow. We know that, and so we try to, you know, respond as quickly as possible, but this, this feels like both a response and, and being proactive. And I think like the cautious, the cautious piece, if you're a faculty member or a student or a staff person at a college or university, you're very nervous. I mean, it's, it's, as Dr. Stewart said, it's intimidating, it's nerve-wracking, it, it creates a feeling sometimes of dis-ease in the classroom, if you're a faculty member especially. I know, I, I feel that way in the classroom. So I think that this is great. Kudos to you all for having a task force that incorporates so many different areas of the college, from faculty to staff. And I mean, I think that you're asking the right questions, and it shows goodwill. Again, I'm speaking as a faculty member, but especially for faculty, it shows goodwill that you're approaching this from this kind of holistic learning standpoint, so thank you.
In previous meetings, I've asked the cabinet to avoid using jargon or to define it for us. Would you define R1 as the terms of a-
Oh, sorry.
Institution?
Research One University gets the most research, has the most research dollars coming in and out.
Okay. Thank you. So, any other questions? Crystal? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Not that we don't have any more questions. I am going to encourage John to send them into President Spearmint. Next up, for information only, that report from the ACCT. So that does it. I think we're going to finance. Gloria's not here, I'll take over. Purchase reports, A.
Good evening. Up first is purchase report A. Their FY26 purchases. First item is Morrow Brothers Ford for $101,703. This expense is for the purchase of a 2024 Ford E350 with a 14-foot van body to replace a 2000 GMC Sierra Cube truck for Starlight Theater, and to purchase a 2025 Ford Ranger pickup truck to replace the 2004 Ford Ranger that's been used by IT. The second item on the purchase report is for Schneider Electric for $29,921. This is for phase two of the building security system upgrade for engineering drawings for Health Sciences Center, Classroom Building One, Jacob Center for Science and Math, and the Advanced Technology Center. Are there any questions on this purchase report?
Questions?
What happened to the one on the cleaning service?
Oh, on cleaning?
Big one is.
From last month.
Last month.
That was from last month, and because of questions, we have withheld the request, and it'll be going out for bid again in the spring or summer.
Uh, John?
So is this all the purchase items in A and B that we're going to pass on at the meeting?
Correct. Wait, let me-
Well, hallelujah.
There is no purchase report A. I'm sorry, it's purchase report B, A. Purchase report A, we only have one purchase report this month.
Okay.
And we have two items.
Okay. All right, that was my question.
All right.
All right. Next, we have the cash and investment report. One thing I want to note, this report was as of October 25th due to the early cut-up for reports because of this early meeting, meeting date in November. Operating cash and investments decreased $10,408, staying nearly flat at $113 million. Total operating cash and investments is at 105.2% of the operating budget as of October 25th. Working cash fund remained flat at $1.8 million, pending interest to be posted at the end of the month. And lastly, capital funds decreased $4 million to $85.5 million as of October 25th due to the dispersments for the Downtown West project. Are there any questions regarding the cash and investment report?
Usual.
We're good.
Okay.
Anything?
Good shape.
No?
Good shape.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the first quarter vital signs. I'll give her a minute to bring up that report. All right, if you go to the third page. Perfect. All right, operating funds, which are funds one and two, revenue was at $22.8 million as of September 30th, or 32.88% of budget, or 39.67% of budget excluding the SIRS on behalf. The state government line is running behind budget, and we are expecting it to fall short approximately by $1.6 million or 13.8% because even though the state increased FY26 apportements by 3%, the state only released 1% of the base operating apportements, and RVC's allocation decreased based on credit hours to the total of the ICC Community College network. The equalization allocation also declined to, for Rock Valley College due to the EAV increases in our district. Other sources included the employer retention credit received in August for $3.8 million. And excluding that, an additional unbudgeted revenue, our revenues are at 33% to budget excluding the SIRS on behalf. Are there any questions regarding revenues?
John?
So basically, are you saying that the state used set-offs to lure our state funding?
So there are two things. On the base operating grant, the state only released 1% of the 3% increase for the total for the community college, total community colleges.
Okay.
So-
Is that, is that permanent, or we don't know because of the budget?
We are waiting for the governor to release that.
Okay.
But our allocations for both the base and the equalization were impacted because it's, there's an allocation formula.
Yeah.
And it's complexed, and it looks at our number of credit hours to the entire, credit hours for the entire state.
Yeah.
So our little ratio decreased. So some of the community colleges had a greater increase in credit hours than we did for the allocation.
So we got to get in there and get more students, right?
Yes.
If we want more money.
If we want more money. And then on the equalization grant, which looks at what our tax revenues are, we are, we are receiving more tax property revenue than other parts of the state due to EAV increases. So the ones that are getting more or had an increase in their equalization were the community colleges that were further downstate because their property rates are not increasing as fast as ours.
Are you saying that because we are getting more money through the EVA, Eva tax revenue, our state revenue therefore is offset?
Our portion.
Right.
Our ratio that we're going to get is going to be less.
So if we didn't get as much from property taxes, our state income would go up?
Yeah, but I'd rather take more from property taxes.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we're going to move, I don't need further questions on revenues.
No, go ahead.
Okay, we'll move on to expenses. Operating expenses were at $10.7 million as of September 30th, or 16.33% of budget, or 19.95% of budget excluding the SIRS on behalf. I have no additional comments regarding expenses. Are there any questions?
Questions? John?
I, I imagine, or I hope these are in, right in the right topic here, but can you update us on how we stand with SIRS? I, I thought I read that we had $11 million added or in the SIRS account somewhere.
Do 11.8, or almost 11.9 million dollars is what we're, we put in the budget for SIRS on behalf? I do not know what SIRS on behalf will be until we get that number in August of next year.
So that was our best estimate, then?
That is our estimate based kind of on historical trend.
And do we have a contingency fund built into that estimate, or is that just straight out an estimate?
So let me explain SIRS on behalf. SIRS on behalf is the contribution that the state puts into the state university retirement plan for the community colleges. It is allocated out. For accounting purposes, the community colleges, including Rock Valley College, recognize that as a revenue and an expense. So it is a net zero to the college at the end of a fiscal year. There is no cash that is moved in or out for that.
Don't, well, we have a separate tax, don't we? Or something that we pay to the state or pay on behalf of our employees to serve?
No. The other thing that maybe you're mixing up with is the other post-employment benefits, the OPEB.
Okay.
And that is a reserve that we have set forth for if that is ever passed on to the community colleges, there is no recognition of revenue or expense for that.
Okay. What happened to the idea that, is it still percolating out there that we may have to pay into SIRS that may get 100% viable?
No, that's the OPEB, the Other Pension Employment Benefit Plan.
Okay. Is that still kicking?
It still kicks.
We're constantly reserving for it.
Yes.
Yeah. What, where would we be percentage-wise of requirement?
I can't tell you that right now, but I will be talking about that when I ask for my fund transfer later on.
I remember, so we're maybe 75% reserved?
Yeah, we were reserved, yeah, to what they, what they, what they were estimating because they keep revising the projections.
That's the, that's the critical one.
Yeah.
The OPEB reserve.
Go ahead, yeah. I like the questions. I mean, you know, you all live and breathe this every day, you know? We only get to hear it sometimes, a couple times a month. We appreciate the clarification, and if we're a little confused at the time, thank you for being diplomatic and clarifying things, so go ahead, John.
One of my concerns after examining the- One of my concerns after examining the documents was, um, healthcare seems to be trending slightly over budget again.
Yeah, I'll be talking about that when I get to those slides.
Okay. The other question I have, and I think I found the answer, do we have enough in travel expenses? Two. So, and then, uh, the other question I have, and it may be covering it later, is, uh, is budgeted payroll understated?
We'll be talking about that, that's coming up in the next couple of slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. The next slide, Funds One and Two, that's additional detail on Funds One and Two. I just want to speak briefly on Fund Five, which is auxiliary. And as a reminder to the board, that includes the Center for Learning in Retirement, Community Education, Athletics, and Starlight Theater. And at the end of September, there was a net revenue of $390,000. But it is early in the fiscal year, and I anticipated that I'll be moving closer to budget as the year progresses for Athletics and Starlight Theater as they get ramped up during the fiscal year. Are there any questions on Fund Five?
Going once, going twice, go.
Alright, if you move to payroll year-to-date, payroll year-to-date is running under budget, but it is slightly higher than fiscal year '25. And then, the next slide, you can see payroll by month runs a similar, follows a similar pattern for FY25. The reason that we are running below budget on salary expenses is when we budget, we budget for full employment at the college, and obviously, we do have departures and gaps and rehiring during the year. And so, that's why we are running slightly under budget.
So, will that gap continue through the, uh, through the year of 1.2.2 million dollars below at the end of the year?
It might.
So, there's your cover for lack of revenue.
That does help. Alright, we're gonna go to group medical, please. So, group medical cost year-to-date is running 4.7 ahead, 7% ahead of budget, and 8.9% ahead of FY25 actuals. This is largely due to increased health insurance costs, our number of claims, and as more participants have met their deductibles and out-of-pocket limits, more costs are paid by the plan. Our plan year runs January 1st through December 31st, so we are in the last quarter right now of our health insurance plan year. This is expected to continue through December, and then I do expect it to decline when the new plan year begins January 1st, as healthcare costs per participant, well, the next slide, I just want to go to the next slide. Healthcare costs per participant is up 4.1% compared to fiscal year '25. Then I answer the question on group medical, healthcare cost.
So, let's say the new year gets here, are you saying health costs might go down? Or they're going up?
We are self-insured.
Yeah.
And right now, when employees, as they pay, they have an out-of-pocket and a deductible they have to meet first before the cost comes to the college. Later in the year, they have met those out-of-pockets and deductibles, therefore, the college pays a larger, larger portion of that hair, healthcare cost out.
So, basically, they're gonna start back the first of the year paying their deductible?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the cycle.
Great. Any other questions on that? No? Thank you.
Alright, and then informational in your packet is a quarter of the report of purchase reports between 20, $10,000 and $25,000. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Operations Discussion Board Liaison, Trustee Turojan.
Thank you, good evening, Board. The first item tonight will be a presentation by our Chief of Police, Tom Yale, regarding the Cleary Act. He'll explain a little bit more about it, but this is basically an annual report that we are required to fill out via the federal government, so, Chief Yale?
Good evening, everyone. This is our yearly Cleary Report. We did publish on time. Button, are you flipping? Okay. So, with the Cleary Act, the purpose is really to provide the campus community with timely and accurate, complete information about the safety of the campus, so they can make informed decisions and keep themselves safe. Cleary Act is a campus security crime prevention law that's really focused on consumer information. We have to comply so we can get Title IV funds, student financial assistance programs, Pell Grants, work-study Perkins loans, et cetera. This year, 2025, in January, the fines for Cleary violations went up about 3% to $71,554 per violation. So, the ASR, the Cleary Act requires universities that receive these funds to disseminate publicly an annual security report every October 1st. It includes three years' statistics previous plus the year present. The ASR must include statistics on campus crime. The material published in the report also reflects the State of Illinois, Illinois Security Enhancement Act. In the ASR, we, RVC has to put the policy statements such as crime reporting, educational programs, drug, alcohol, and emergency response. These statistics are not just from the main campus, but also our satellite campuses and adjacent public property around. Institution of Higher Education, we have to include at least four distinct categories such as robbery, burglary, and arson. If any of those involve hate crimes, they also have to be included. Also in there is the Violence Against Women Act, that includes domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, and stalking. Also included is if the college has any arrests for referrals for disciplinary action on weapons, drugs, or liquor violations. In the ASR, it's only Cleary crimes that are reported, not all crimes to the college. Last year, there were only four Cleary crimes that occurred that we had to report, uh, three on main campus and one at the ATC. Domestic battery, stalking, vandalism, and a drug law violation resulted out of a Belvedere arrest that was adjacent to our campus. We were not involved in that. Also this year, we had to include a new hazing policy from Department of Education, so that was developed with Dr. Pyer and Student Services and myself, and that was also included this year in the ASR, which you should all have. I know it was brief and short, do we have any questions?
Any questions? John?
Yes, sir.
Did, uh, did, uh, when you said you did the hazing policy, did, was that reviewed by our councilman?
Dr. Pyer?
Okay. We'll double check, but I'm pretty sure it was.
Well, if he says he did it.
I did not.
Oh, oh. Alright.
Was the hazing policy slipped into something we voted on but didn't talk about? Or is it something we need to?
It's from the Department of Education, right?
It's from the Department of Education. They write our own policy.
Okay. But do we have to adopt it? Yeah, I mean, very often, even stuff that's pre-done for us, you know, adopt it per this section of statute or something like, you know, that, it doesn't necessarily, wouldn't be necessarily a first and second reading for it, and we could do it, but, I mean, if there's nothing to change, and it's just, you know, adopting it by reference, then we just adopt it by reference to make sure that the boards are aware of it, you know, so, since we're policy, so.
There's a written.
Okay. The, the original question was, you know, did we, um, adopt it officially as a board and to bake it into our policies?
Have fallen to that procedure.
So, even if we adopt it by reference, you know?
Were you about to say something?
Okay.
We'll verify.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, thanks very much.
Thank you, Chief Yale. The next items, uh, is a downtown update. Uh, I'm going to give a verbal update on the downtown due to the time constraints between the two meetings. We have a contingency log that's listed in there, but we missed the deadline to submit all of the additional new contingencies for the downtown campus. And we'll tell you that there are more that will be coming forward to you that did not make your packet. There's two large items I want to do, talk through. One is a structural change and reconciliation. As you know, we bid out multiple packages. Uh, one package we called Bid Package Four, which was structural steel and site work, and then Bid Package Five was everything else. There was a need to reconcile some of the differences between the IFP, which is issued for, or IFC, I should say, issued for construction documents between Bid Package Four and Bid Package Five. That being said, that particular change order ran about $67,000. We also had a unsuitable soil, uh, change order for about $30,000 that was in the area of Rockton Road. Once we were finally able to get underneath Rockton Road, we found out that there was a large quantity of unsuitable soil that we had to rectify. So, those two made up the vast majority of the change orders. Our current change order total is 228,000, which is about 10% of our contingency budget, but we're well over 60% of the, uh, through the project. So, I think we're doing good on our contingencies, and we will have all this information for you, this is literally hot off the presses.
And you're discussing change orders on, as they relate to item number two, Downtown West update, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The project, the project itself is going well. You will start seeing what's, what will be FF and E bids.
What was it?
Uh, we, you will start seeing what's called FF and E bids, which is furniture, fixture, and equipment. We're going out to bid, uh, this week for cabinets in the automotive and collision repair area. We still have furniture to go out, IT components like switches, UPSs, and computers. So, you will start seeing more of that as that project ramps up and transitions from, uh, securing the outside and getting ready for winter, and we go inside and start running MEPs, which is mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
Questions? John?
Well, I, I note that 20, 228,000 is, well, it's about 97,000. I look forward to seeing what that is. And it is. I, I assume we have a balance left in the contingency fund?
The contingency fund total was 2.2 million. We spent about 200,000, so we have 2 million of contingency still available.
Alright. So, we're in relatively good shape?
Right now. I will say, right now, um, just, you know, crystal ball.
Oh, I know, and when are we supposed to open up again? August?
August. August 15th, 2026. Substantial completion for the project is to be done by June, uh, excuse me, July 1st, so that we have time to move in, get situated, get everything situated for the fall semester.
All classes.
So, and I just want to remind you that both Trustee Nelson and I had questions on some of the, how the bids were organized, and, um, maybe some, sometimes how few bidders we had on some of them, so he'll probably continue to ask questions about any, uh, change orders and things like that, so.
Understandable.
Be ready for the questions, so.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you.
The other item that I was gonna give you a verbal update on is CL2. We haven't been able, really hasn't been a need to give updates because we were in a transition, we're going from a transition of information gathering, from all the faculty and all the other things, to now actually concepts and designs. So, in the very near future, we'll start seeing some, uh, Jello Cube, I guess would be the best way to describe it, renderings of what potentially can go where, what can fit next to who and where. So, we are transitioning right now into that, which is called schematic design, uh, just for reference, um, and we, I will have, uh, more in-depth and detailed information in the very near future.
Okay. Any questions? No? Thank you.
And because we have a whole bunch of other projects going on.
What?
Uh, I think it's 12, 15? 12 or 15, I don't remember, to be honest with you. I'd have to, I'd have to look at my notes. But there are several that are, that are out there right now that have small change orders that I wanted to talk to you about, per the policy, so that I'm keeping you informed. One is the athletic turf fields. We did have a small change order as we went through the policies with the attorneys and others for the contract, the final signing of the contract, we realized that we didn't have builder's risk, and it was not in the, uh, contract with Team Reel. So, we do have a change order for the small builder's risk of $1,429.96, but, uh, we still have $88,492 left for that project, which has started, by the way. The second item is the BST Phase One lighting. If you recall, you just recently, last month, approved Phase Two and Three. Phase One is complete, and, uh, we basically didn't use any contingency, so we're getting a credit back of $13,764 from that project. Just making you aware of that. The fire alarm, uh, bid, uh, Phase One, which is the replacement of the fire alarm panels that are 30-some years old. We're well into that project, we had a $52,500 contingency. We need to run two data communication cables in the boiler house, and that was $800, so we still have $51,700 left in contingency for that project. We have, uh, the HSC third-floor build-out. We started out with $203,600 in contingency. We have added, uh, three additional change orders. Uh, one, uh, was, uh, to infill some areas between the doorways that we discovered, uh, that needed to be filled in between the carpet and the tile. The other ones are small, um, steel framing and fireproofing installation around the elevator that was discovered, and a new sub-pump alarm in the elevator for, uh, detecting water that was, uh, needed. So, we still have $173,849, and that project is nearing completion.
Okay. Question?
I got one more, sorry. We have exterior tuck pointing.
Yeah.
We had, uh, this is a situation where I told you we were getting credits. Well, we also had to do, uh, one debit expense for the change orders, and that was, uh, we discovered three areas where the concrete seals on the expansion joints were bad, and we had to replace them. Uh, that was a change order of $50,559. But we still have, uh, money left over because of all the credits that we had received, um, prior. Does anybody have any questions?
If you complete all these projects and have all the contingency left over, that would be quite an accomplishment.
We're trying.
And, and I, and I don't mean this as direction, it's a, it's a, it's a suggestion or a request, maybe. You can just include it as part of the change order, uh, update. You can say, you know, last month, we had 15 projects, this month, we have 16, or we have 14, you know, we've, and then go through, and seven of them have change orders, and then you kind of go through it. Just to, again, we only see it a couple times a month, it's a nice reminder for us about all that you're doing, you know, in terms of those projects. Just, this lets us know that, you know, it's like Bob, goes to Bob's point about trends, are we trending stable, or are we whacking away some of the projects, so?
Right, yeah, we're, we're, we're.
You're whacking away?
We're whacking away at some of the projects, yes.
Okay, good, good.
Yes. Alright, so the next item is the Personnel Report, which you have in your packet. Uh, we do have a holding spot for a potential economics instructor, a full-time position, that they are working on currently, and we do have one departure, Dr. M- And we do have one departure, Dr. Michelle Roeder, philosophy, is retiring in August, so. Any questions on that?
One, two, nope.
The next item is the events calendar. I'll start out by mentioning an event that is not on this because it's not being held here at the college, but that is the scholarship luncheon for the RVC Foundation, which is November 7th. I wanted, I'm sure all of you already got invitations from the foundation for that. I'm hoping you're planning on attending that wonderful event. I don't recall where it's being held at, but.
At the Radisson.
At the Radisson, thank you.
And as far as I know, there's well over 350 people signed up to attend, which is a record. And next year they'll be looking for another venue.
Bigger spot, yeah.
Bigger place.
Yeah.
Do I have to dress up for it or can I wear my suspenders?
You can come as you want, I guess.
Thanks.
Most people dress up, Paul, but.
Well, then I won't be there.
That's a foundation thing.
You're the country lawyer, I'm the country IT guy.
Couple other items. This is Native American Heritage Month. We were having a kickoff or had a kickoff on, on, well, the 5th today. No, wait, today's the 4th. Tomorrow, we have a kickoff, I apologize. We do have the HCCTP graduation ceremony that will be in the ERC at 3:00 PM on the 6th. HCCTP is a highway construction program. If you recall, we're going to have a Veterans Day celebration at noon on Veterans Day, 11/11. And also I wanted to showcase the international showcase, which will be in the Student Center atrium. This is a, a program where our international students can showcase their culture, their food, their different music and bring us all together so that we can all understand each other a little bit better.
Cool. Any questions, comments? Everybody's nodding their head, thank you very much.
And then the last item is a quarterly employee personnel update, informational only.
Think you're done.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
So under, under other business, unfinished business, because I've been dealing with what I suspect are AI-generated issues on a national level and a regional level. I haven't been able to have time to speak to President Spearman on the item A, Studer Education Contract. So we won't be taking that up tonight. But we will be taking up a question and maybe I'll, at the board retreat discussion, how to maybe modify our retreat, make it more like a retreat that was, that trustee Simpson kind of learned about at the ACCT that you were just at, right? So what would, what would they suggest in your? Doesn't have to be big, you just say.
Well, I mean, I did take notes, so I'll pull up my notes. Or you're gonna, gosh, I still think I can't hear me? I'm right next to you. I mean, basically, well, like I told, like I mentioned last week, it should be a little more fun and everybody should get something from it. When I first went to the first retreat, I was just kind of surprised that, to me, it just seemed like another board meeting. And I don't know, I feel like we can't, we have enough board meetings. We don't need to have another board meeting. But it should be valuable to all of us that attend. Let's see, I'm just going to read you my notes because I'm not really as organized as most of you are. Should center around specific topics, discuss key milestones, even just like FYIs, how we even do at the board meetings. Possibly provide state of the college, not just reading off PowerPoint. Like, you know, more of discussions and not just, because we can all read the PowerPoints or just the FYIs. I think the biggest takeaway that I got from it is that, like, relationship building, getting to know each other better, not just the board, but the cabinet, team building, team cohesion, like building trust with one another, learning about each other personally and professionally and doing this in a fun way. And then just what would, like, maybe giving us some inspiration why we'd want to be a better board, spending time together, bringing in, like, maybe some students too, to kind of see, like, I mean, I know we can see students all the time and we have our student trustee, but maybe the reason why, like, why are we here about the students, even having, like, presentations from students? And I know a lot of this we probably can't do this year just because it's already November, but even for future, like, some presentations for the students, maybe like, and this was, I thought on my own, they didn't talk about this, might not even be a good idea, but doing something like, oh, and I also think we should do it maybe not on campus, somewhere other than campus.
Hawaii?
Yes. Approved.
Hey, that reminds me of Bob's, during COVID, Bob was always on a tropical island or something for his background, so.
But maybe like giving some sort of, like, competition to the students, like, maybe they could get a free lunch with the board or something to come to the retreat and spend time with the board or doing something like that. We could.
I'm sure they'd love that.
Well, everybody loves free food. We could look into somebody maybe coming and, like, helping us with this. Of course, I'm sure it was like a sales pitch, but they did talk about ACCT does provide people, like, and some people to kind of help with board retreats as well. And I also think that the, we as the board should look for someone to come in and not just, like, having, like, tasking the cabinet to be like, okay, what should we have at the board retreat? Like, we should maybe discuss what, you know, who we'd want to have come speak and what we'd want to learn. What else? I don't know, let me look, hold on, let me. Let's see, it should provide purpose for what we do. We should discuss, like I just said, the students. Like I said, the off-site, relaxed off-site setting. I know we have to post it, but anybody's welcome to come. We could still post the location even though it's off-site. Help us see, like, the bigger picture. The community college is about lifelong learning, so the board retreats should be the same. We also, I think they did also talk about, like, having a, like, a board of ethics statement and maybe something that we even all sign, just how we should, you know, how we should act. Comply, whatever. Let's see. And then I took away also, like, organizations find retreats can rekindle enthusiasm for, enthusiasm for the mission and strengthen each other's sense of purpose. And that's it, I don't know.
No, I, I thank you very much for that report. And I know you're a little uneasy about giving an official report, but I think you did a fine job. And I think you'd have to admit that some of the ideas, the suggestions that you had would require a little bit more planning in advance than November and December.
Right, and that's why, yeah.
So what I'm suggesting is that the board consider, and we won't even talk about the type of topics right now since we have a little bit of time, but a simpler, maybe reserve an hour or an hour and 15 minutes out of the board retreat in January on a team building collaboration type of activity. President Spearman shared with me an activity that he recently had, an event, and it was only 45 minutes or so like that, or less. So I'm just thinking more like an hour or so, and I have an idea or two, but let's just think about it, come back. And I was really hoping to get Gloria in on this discussion, but I'm, I'm pretty sure Gloria's been involved in these types of retreat activities and all the organizations she's belonged to. So I'd really like to hear what she has to say. And we've still got a little time for a simpler type, more simple type of activity. So think about it and we'll talk about it at the next meeting, okay? Any questions on it right now, though? Thank you, okay. Was there anything under, the only other unfinished business, or maybe it's new business? There's a conference in ACCT going in, in February. And Crystal, are you, will you?
Going.
You're going? So, Crystal and Gloria showing an interest and John, if we can afford it, did you do the budget on it? I'll find the money, okay.
Somewhere.
Yeah. Use some AI to figure out where you can squeeze it out of, so.
I looked at the budget, we have money.
Oh, I appreciate you.
If John says so.
Legal wizard, yeah, that's right, yeah. You and Heather's crystal ball, right? That's it.
Yeah.
Or is that Rick's?
Tough taskmaster.
I just have to separate you and Bob's, he can't party anymore, but so we'll be sending three.
Work around her, I'll tell you.
No, I would ask that maybe at least one of you call in, just so we can have more than just a basic quorum, okay? Call, because we're having a cowlet while you're away, so. We're having a committee of the whole meeting. I don't want to imply that we're having a fight or anything, but. So, any other old or new business there?
Yes. Wanted to inform the board that the Northern Illinois Council of Government is inviting us to our annual legislative luncheon Tuesday, December 9th. I believe several of you attended last year. They've been doing this for years now. The college plans to purchase a table of 10 and really would like to know if all the board members want to go or just a few board members want to go. Let us know, that would be greatly appreciated. I don't know what they're going to serve this year, but yes, the legislators that will be in attendance, the panelists will be Representatives Cabello, Zanowski, Vella, West, Senators Ariano, Stottleman and.
Anything else?
It's a luncheon, right?
The luncheon.
December 9th.
It would be at the UMB Bank Pavilion.
I'm assuming you'll use an email, like, send us an email.
Illinois Banking Trust, emerged. So, did we send this out yet? I don't think so, we'll send it out. So you'll have time to say yea or nay, or please let us know. You're all welcome, we'll figure it out.
Where is it again?
Aldine.
Aldine. They got a convention center there.
The Pavilion, yeah, the Aldine, the big.
A little stressful.
Bob?
I raised a question, have you ever made a contact with John Cabella to invite him to the campus? Because we put the arm on him, visiting.
He reached out to me, so we just need to figure out the time.
You got his phone number, he gave it to you, so.
Yeah, he, yeah, he texted me.
Make sure you make him, bring him over here. He always avoids us.
No, he's, after your conversation with him, he's ready for.
Put the arm on him, get his butt over here.
Trustee told him to come to campus, he said he'll come as long as you're there with him.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Glad you're putting the string on, on local politicians, Bob, really appreciate it.
Well, it just irritates me that, you know, some of these guys, they don't even show up, even though they got voters. Just because the school's not in their district, they don't show up. And that's not right. They got voters that come to school here that they should be represented, should know about our college. So John was one of the guys that I needed to be invited.
You're tough. You're tough.
Well, listen, you know.
He's not, he's not always a bolt of cherry, he's like he is with me.
That's right, John, you and I, we just had fun.
What, you guys hang out at a haunted house and just bond or something? Why, what's going on?
No, but one of our trustees did that night, he was sitting between us.
We, we behaved ourselves.
All right, I don't have any other new business, you got something else?
Yes, I have one more. So we were, we forget, we, we forgot to leave the lobbyist's update or report on, under Teaching, Learning and Communications, they gave us for that. But we figure there was enough information that we want to provide you with an update that this committee of the whole. So I'm going to hand it over to VP Snyder to discuss our, to provide you our lobbyist or legislation update at this point in time.
Thank you, Dr. Spearman. We're focusing on the Illinois House Bill 1312 that was recently passed and during the fall veto session. During the fall veto session, the General Assembly passed HB 1312, an omnibus bill designed to safeguard constitutional rights and ensure due process during immigration enforcement actions. As the bill was being discussed, Dr. Spearman was in close contact with our lobbyist, Dr. Letisa Wallace, and the Illinois Community College Presidents were in close contact with lobbyist Liz Brown-Reed to express their position on this legislation. The legislation includes new requirements for public colleges and universities in Illinois. Please note, while these requirements are headed to the governor's desk to be signed into law, they do not impact how we handle inquiries from local, state or federal officers because RVC already has such procedures in place. Under the measure, institutions must develop and file with the Illinois Community College Board written procedures for handling inquiries or visits from federal immigration agents, post on the college website clear information about who students can contact for assistance and prohibit employees from disclosing any students or employees' citizenship or immigration status without a warrant, subpoena, court order or the individual's written consent. RVC has a procedure, sorry, I lost my spot. RVC has a procedure for receiving warrants and subpoenas. The procedure is being reviewed and revised as needed. Employees must contact the RVC Police Department and they will determine the next steps for the legal documentation. If no documentation exists, the college adheres to the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act, or FERPA, a federal law that protects student privacy and will not disclose information. Our immediate next steps after updating the board are to send a communication to employees similar to the one we sent on January 29th of this year, indicating that RVC is committed to protecting student information and ensuring that all community members have access to education regardless of their immigration status. Our internal procedures will formalize these protections and align with state law. In addition, frontline staff in student affairs and other areas will be reminded of the procedures to contact RVC police if anyone inquires about a student's citizenship status. These employees will also be reminded about their legal obligations to protect student information under FERPA. The college will continue to work with ICCB and our peer institutions to ensure compliance and to address any implementation challenges that arise once the law takes effect. Are there any questions?
Nope, oh, John?
I know in Chicago, the Chicago high schools lock down when ICE agents appear. Do we have any such plans here?
We do not.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, sir.
The only thing else I just wanted to remind, at the last meeting that we had, a question was raised about a, being alerted to awards, recognitions and the like that the college receives or individuals the college receive. And I believe they sent out links to our website that actually have a section on there that, that notes awards and, and recognitions. If anybody has any questions on that, let me know. I don't know if we need to create anything new. Are you happy with the?
I didn't see the one about all the marketing awards.
I'll go back and I'll take a look. There's like, you could actually save a search and this and I kind of bookmark it, but I'll go through and I'll take a look. Okay, but that's all I have.
Starlight, the Starlight one was there.
So, I, we're not, we don't have a, it's closed session, do we? Nope, okay, so the next regular Board of Trustees meeting is November 18th, 2025 at 5:15 PM. Again, it's moved up because of the holiday schedule. The meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Room, PAR, room 0214, in the Educational Resource Center, ERC, on the main campus. And then the next committee of the whole meeting is December 2nd, 2025 at 5:15 PM. The meeting will be held again in the PAR, in the Educational Resource Center on the main campus. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Trojan, seconded by Nelson, all, roll call.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Trojan?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned. At 7:16, Bob, not quite two hours flat, but pretty good.
That's good, that's good.